Okay, Council President's coming in. Uh, here he is. Okay, we have the Sheriff. Um, we're gonna start off a couple of quick things. We don't have a slide for this one. Um, I'm joined by, uh, to my left in about eight seconds, Council President Bernard C. Jack Young. Uh, next to him is Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District. Uh, to his left, Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th. To my right, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton of the 6th District, Member of the Committee and Vice President of the Council. To her right, Councilman Robert Stokes from the 12th District. Uh, in the back, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, staffed to the Committee. Sheriff Anderson, um, uh, we've got you and, uh, I, he doesn't need an introduction, Sam Kogan. Thank you very much, uh, for joining us, Sheriff. I certainly appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule, uh, to join us to talk about your appropriation request. I wish that all of your colleagues in elected government, uh, felt the same way about the importance of appearing before the City Council, so we appreciate that. Um, Sheriff, you're welcome to do a brief introduction. I'd ask you to keep it to one to two minutes. I think I speak for most of my colleagues when I say we're very pleased with the Sheriff's Department. Uh, most of my colleagues know the questions that they want to ask, and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Thank you for those kind words. Uh, it's a pleasure for me, uh, to be here. Uh, every time I walk in the city hall, I see some old friends, right? But, uh, believe me, uh, I, I believe in this process, because the Sheriff's Office is run by taxpayers' dollars. You all represent the people as I represent the people. The people should know how their money is being spent. For the last three years, uh, we have had the same budget, around twenty million dollars and some change. Always stay within budget, keep overtime down, uh, find ways to be creative with the budget to provide a lot of services. I can, uh, tell you this, this afternoon, that, uh, my constitutional duties, uh, with the courts, being carried out, such as court out security, service of criminal process, criminal civil process, warrant services, prisoner transport, all being done, all being done on a timely fashion. As of this morning, I believe that the judges are still happy with me and happy with, with my office. Uh, I have Sam here, he's basically my budget administrator, right? And, uh, one of the things we discussed, uh, last evening and, uh, this morning, was a lot of the savings that, uh, has occurred over in the office, but I'm, I'm gonna let him, uh, speak on that. But I can, uh, say this, twenty-five percent of our budget is being reimbursed to the city through Sheriff's fees. Uh, we have found savings in different departments that we're returning back to the city. And we look at that, and let me reiterate that, this, these are taxpayers' dollars. They don't belong to me, don't belong to Sam, they belong to the people. So, I think that may be my two minutes, and the next voice you hear is Sam Kogan, my, uh, budget manager.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you for keeping it, uh, brief. Sam?
Thank you for, uh, allowing us to testify today. I'm gonna go over some numbers and I'll go through the different sections, uh, briefly, and then we'll open it up to any questions that people may have. Uh, so, I want to talk a little bit about, I think the Sheriff touched on this, about the fiscal responsibility at the Sheriff's Office and some of the fees that we're generating. I'm gonna start from there. Uh, the Sheriff's Office generated approximately three point five million dollars in fees for revenue on civil services in two thousand seventeen. Um, we generated approximately two point one million from a surcharge on filing evictions, and that surcharge funded the entire service for the Sheriff's Domestic Violence Unit, um, in two thousand seventeen. So our entire domestic violence service was, uh, paid for from these fees that were generated. Um, we also were able to reimburse our child support services at sixty-six point six percent, uh, which is also one of our major fees through a reimbursement grant. We were also able to identify a hundred ninety thousand dollar, uh, savings by, uh, in our vehicle maintenance. We didn't need our, our cars to go to preventive maintenance at the same rate that the Police Department was, 'cause they're running their cars twenty-four seven. We don't run our cars twenty-four seven, so we were able to return a hundred ninety thousand into the general fund, and you'll see that as a cut in our budget. Um, and so that's some of our, our stewardship that we do. We also have stayed within our operating budget, um, and we plan to do so as well. So, uh, let's start at eight-eight-one, which is Court Security. The Sheriff's Office maintains Court Security Services, uh, to both Circuit Courts and the Juvenile Justice Facility. Um, we place deputies in each, uh, criminal courtroom and a family court for safety. Some of them have two deputies in there. Um, we've upgraded to state-of-the-art metal detectors and X-ray machines at all public entrances, and in, uh, two thousand and sixteen, through the judiciary, we were able to upgrade all the camera systems that are in the court facility, and we monitored them proactively to, uh, try to avoid crime and respond to crime when they occur within the facility. So that's our Court Security section. Uh, eight-eight-two, which is our Deputy Sheriff Enforcement, that includes our warrant group, so we target the most violent offenders in our warrant group. The deputies are sworn in as U.S. Marshals Task Force Officers. Um, in two thousand seventeen, we captured eighty-four federal fugitives, uh, that were wanted for murder, armed robbery, rape, weapons violations, and illegal narcotics out of that group. And in two thousand seventeen, we closed, uh, eight hundred and ninety-six warrants through that group. In that group as well, we have someone assigned to Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, and also DEA as Task Force Officers. Those deputies are full-time assigned to those units, and they bring the federal resources back to the Sheriff's Office while they're working on, uh, violent, uh, fugitive cases, as well as working on, uh, with federal agents, and looking at gun trafficking and narcotics distribution. We also assisted out of this group in Criminal Patrol in high-crime areas, neighborhoods, uh, in schools and in shopping areas. Uh, in November, uh, we had ten deputies deployed, uh, from five PM to one AM on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights, and we did over a thousand hours of nine-one-one patrol in the Northwest District to assist the Police Department when they're having, uh, problems in that area. Currently, we're assisting, uh, the school police, and for the last three months, we've been at the Reach Academy and City College at dismissal, at dismissal time, um, providing patrol services there as well. We maintain a K-9 Services Group. It's an explosive ordinance K-9 group. Um, they work in the court facility, they have a certified, uh, K-9 dog, and they keep the courthouse safe. That's also a shared resource, so they're used for events, and they're also used throughout the state of Maryland if they're needed. One of the things that we've done out of this group, which has, uh, been, uh, an expansion of our duties that the Sheriff talked about, is we work, uh, festivals and events. Um, in doing so, we're able to do that, uh, outside of the normal court times, because the deputies are available at those times, and it helps the promoters and the city of Baltimore keep expenses down. Um, in two thousand and seventeen, the Sheriff's Office deployed more than two thousand six hundred and forty-seven manpower hours to festivals. Some examples of these festivals that the Sheriff's Office deployed were the Fells Point Festival, the Latino Festival in Patterson Park, the St. Patrick's Day Festival in Canton Square, Ruth Kirk Festival, the Privateer Festival, and this weekend and last year, we were at the Federal Hill Jazz Festival. We also are able to absorb out of our budget some festivals when we find a surplus. Here's some of the festivals that were protected by the Sheriff's Office that we did not charge because they're charitable. We did not charge for the American Cancer Society Breast Cancer Walk. We didn't charge for the Homeless Connect, we absorbed that in our duties. Work Baltimore Event, the Baltimore Animal and Rescue Center Event, the Barkstober, the Be Gaddy Event, the Southwest Fun Festival Community, uh, Children's Event, and the Skate Park SPCA Event that they had in Hampden. Um, we also added this thing, uh, excuse me, added this, uh, service through our community outreach. We have a full-time deputy assigned to an anti-gang crime message and safety for seniors, and in two thousand seventeen, he did over a hundred and twenty-eight presentations in schools and community centers. Uh, currently, we also do outreach, um, during these festivals that we talk to as well, by giving away, uh, yellow and black totes to young children, which has a book about, uh, law enforcement. We deputize and special deputize the little children, tell them to stay in school, listen to their mother, and report a gun if they see one to an adult. So that's part of our outreach that we have in this section. Next, I'm gonna move to eight-eight-three, which is a service of peace and protective orders. Again, I'm gonna remind you that this service was funded entirely by the revenue that was generated, um, for the eviction surcharges. This was taken over from the Police Department, uh, and the Sheriff's Office now serves all protective orders that originate out of the District and Circuit Court in order to free up the police to perform patrol functions. In the last two years, the Sheriff's Office received over five thousand eight hundred and fifty domestic violence protective orders that would've gone to the Baltimore Police Department, and an additional one thousand seven hundred and nine domestic violence protective orders from surrounding police departments in Maryland that were served by the Sheriff's Office. In two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, the Sheriff's Office arrested over six hundred fifty-three individuals and were able to clear six hundred and eighty-nine warrants. Some individuals had more than one warrant, um, in this section as well, usually for the assault that occurred when the, uh, domestic violence order was taken out. In two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, the Sheriff's Office Domestic Violence Unit was able to seize over one hundred and ten firearms as well. Now I'm gonna move on to eight-eight-four, which is the District Court Services. That is our eviction and foreclosure section. Uh, the Sheriff's Office engages in, uh, the service of evictions that arise from the District Court and also foreclosures that arise from the Circuit Court, and they serve Monday through Friday, uh, and that is that section. Eight-eight-nine is the Child Support Enforcement, and that's the service of child support documents, service of warrants for child support, and, uh, protecting, uh, the Child Support Court. The Child Support Court, uh, section received over seven thousand four hundred and nineteen child support warrants, excuse me, orders, and served, uh, three hundred and eighty child support warrants in two thousand seventeen. Um, one of the things that we like to do is a yearly reconciliation event where we bring people in who are wanted, um, may have been in prison and have higher rearges, and we bring them in, we do, we work with the, uh, the judges and, uh, the Bureau of Support Enforcement and child support, um, and we make a plan for them. The warrant is released, and they're put on some kind of payment plan along with, uh, wraparound services. We've done that for several years in a row. We're planning that for August of this year, and it's in the works right now. Um, and I also want to remind you that sixty point, sixty-six point six of the funding that we spend on child support is reimbursable with a grant with the Department of Child Support Enforcement. And I can answer any questions, and so can the Sheriff, if you need anything.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Um, Sam, can you please email the Committee a copy of that testimony?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. What number is that, Marguerite? For thirty, thirty-nine, forty?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
The requests add up very quickly, fifty-seven. Mr. President?
Um, good morning, or should I say, good afternoon. Um, what is the total budget for the Sheriff's Department? 'Cause it looked like, um, the police overtime budget is more than your budget.
Our total recommended fiscal two thousand and nineteen budget is twenty-one million eight hundred fourteen thousand, uh, one hundred and two dollars.
Oh, that's more than, that's less than the police overtime, um, budget. But, um, I, I don't have too many questions for you guys, 'cause I think y'all do an outstanding job. Um, you didn't list on that list, um, when I called the Sheriff and asked for some help that the Police Department didn't seem to, to give us, uh, when we had a major, uh, drug, um, operation in Councilman Stokes' district, and then we had, uh, some prostitution and, and, and vag, vagrants, um, that was using drugs in the backyards of the new houses that, uh, we have over there, and you sent those officers right away. And I know that Councilman Stokes and I was very, uh, happy, and you cleared that up. So, I mean, your agency does an outstanding job, and you live within your budget. What's your overtime?
I'll have to get you that number, but it's within our budget.
Okay.
Our general overall budget. It may exceed the line item, but it's absorbed within our general overall budget.
And, and I want to commend you all on not charging most of these, uh, festivals. Um, the large amount of money that our Police Department seemed to want to charge them. So, um, I want you to keep up the good work, make sure that you continue to, um, service those who can't afford to, to pay with these festivals, and I just want to thank you guys for a great job.
Thanks.
I support you one hundred percent.
Mr. President, I just want to echo what you've said. Um, obviously, I've had other issues that are specific to my district, uh, but unique. Um, we had a spike in crime, um, in Otterbine in the Southern District, um, because of a flurry of issues, uh, in, in Pig Town area and Cherry Hill and Curtis Bay. Weren't able to, to really put the resources in that were necessary, um, and I talked to, um, Sam and the Sheriff, and we had the resources there. Um, it resulted in an immediate decrease in crime, um, but most importantly, um, neighbors in that neighborhood, constituents, uh, felt comfortable seeing, uh, the Sheriff there. Uh, and I'll tell you, uh, while they were patrolling that area, um, and this isn't a knock at the police, but they didn't just sit there in their car. And, and this, they, this may sound silly, but this made all the difference in the world. There's a stop sign at the corner of Sharp, uh, and Hill Street. It's actually four houses, I don't want to say who lives over there, but it has nothing to do with it. Um, they sat there and started issuing tickets, and I, I can't tell you how many neighbors I had reach out to me and say, "Not only are these guys here taking care of our neighborhood, um, but when they're not busy doing anything, they're actually doing what they should be doing." So, I can't tell you, uh, how much I appreciate that and appreciate the partnership, and can really just only echo the comments that the Council President made, so we really appreciate it. Councilman Pinkett?
So this must just be a love fest, because I, I just, I just want to, um, echo the sentiments that were echoed, um, that, um, you know, whatever you all are doing, keep doing it. Because, um, and, and this isn't a dig at any other agencies, it's just, you're responsive, and, and, and what we need is, from agencies, are, um, team, teammates who are trying to solve problems, and so whenever, you know, I or my staff has reached out to the Sheriff's Department, um, it, it, you, you don't present another blockage, you try to work with us to figure out, okay, how do we solve it? And, and, and I know there are the times when, you know, I've called Sam and he's just, I, I know on the other end of the phone, it's like, "How are we gonna figure this out?" But, but you always do, and so, um, and, and it's not just for us, it's really the communities that are being benefited. When, you know, when somebody wants to have an event and they can't afford, you know, um, security and the other enforcements that's available, um, sometimes the Sheriff's Department is the only option, and, and it really is the difference between a community having an event or not being able to, and, and that really impacts the fabric of our, of our neighborhoods. So, um, thank you for, for your continued work, and, um, because you're doing such a good job, you can expect for us to pull on you even more.
Appreciate it.
And while we're on that, um, before I go to the next one, we're, we're gonna bring this up tomorrow, um, the special permits, um, process, and, and I'm remiss for not having brought this up with DOT, uh, as I think many of us are, um, but the, the formula that's used for BPD is broken for how they staff special events. The costs, um, that they charge is broken, and it's highway robbery, uh, and it's a shame that, um, even when we bring in, uh, qualified folks who are trained law enforcement professionals like the Sheriff, or even, uh, private security firms, and we, we all know them and they operate in our district and do a great job, we, we still get pushback from BPD for special events. Um, and we oftentimes hear, um, tragic incidents that have occurred nationally, um, related to, to mass gun violence, whether it's Las Vegas, or, or Orlando, or Sandy Hook, or whatever, uh, which are tragic events. Being cited is the reason why we have to have a BPD overtime officer at forty-eight dollars an hour, which is insane, 'cause you're hearing from everyone up here that the Sheriff's managed to do it pretty efficiently and within budget, uh, and that's providing that free support, and they're still within budget. And BPD can't figure out how to do that as an agency. It's not directed at police officers or, or necessarily anyone in administration, and that's, as an agency, that function is broken, and we need to fix that. And we're gonna dig into that really, really deep dive tomorrow night. We're gonna spend a lot of time talking about that, and if we have to stay here till eleven o'clock tomorrow night to fully get through that conversation, that's what I intend to do. And I know the President and Vice Chair and the rest of the Committee is with me on that, so...
Can I make a call?
Yes, sir.
Um, I echo the sentiments of, um, the Chair. Um, what I don't understand is this, they're supposed to have beats, and they, they, you know, when these festivals are going on, why should we have to pay when the officer's already supposed to be patrolling around that area? I, I just don't understand why we have to pay, um, for a, a police officer to be at a festival when it's supposed to be a part of their job. This is not directed at you guys, but I'm just saying, um, I, I just don't see it, and I think forty-eight dollars an hour is outrageous.
And I, I'm just gonna pile on here. Um, the fact that DOT controls these events, and I don't know that, I'm not gonna get into that right now, but the fact that DOT controls these events, and we allow police to have the final sign-off on them, is, is wrong? Something wrong with that?
We can fix that.
We can fix that very quickly, and I think we should fix that. We shouldn't be giving Fire Department, or Police Department, or any other agency, uh, final say over what happens in our streets. We have an agency that manages that. If DOT's not capable of managing that, then let's just collapse them back into the Department of Public Works where they once were. Uh, but if we're gonna give them their own agency and they're gonna be responsible for management of the public right away, then they need to be empowered to, to manage that, and they need to have appropriate staffing in, in the Special Events Office, which they do not have, uh, and they need to be able to do their job and not be at the, the whims of, um, what a, a specific district commander is dealing with, because we cannot slow down, uh, tourism or community events, because these things are all, uh, directly related to economic development and things we're trying to accomplish in this area. Councilman Stokes, then Burnett, then Middleton. Stokes?
Okay, thank you, um, Chairman. Um, Sheriff Anderson, I just want to thank your staff for, and President Young talked about some issues that were going over in the Oliver community, and talked with you, um, Mr. Henry Martin, and he just rode it out without a problem, and you're doing some wonderful things in the city, not just fighting crime, but going around talking to residents at community associations, but I just wanted to emphasize that, but since the, it's getting warm, I'll be calling y'all more to ask for your help in the 12th District, but I just want to share that with you, and thank you for all the great things you do, not just paid stuff, but the stuff your, your crew and your staff volunteer. Thank you.
Um, before I get to Councilman Burnett, so I got Councilman Burnett, then Middleton, uh, then Dorsey. Um, Sam, uh, what if the, what if the Council, how would the Sheriff's Department respond if the Council said, "We don't believe that BPD is able to effectively manage special events anymore, because they have other responsibilities and, and we just, we don't want to utilize BP..." Let's just say we said, "We don't want to utilize BPD any longer for special events." Is that a functionality you think that the Sheriff's Department would be interested in exploring with us? Taking, taking that on, which would include a transfer of that appropriation over to the Sheriff's Department? That would mean staffing up at certain times, obviously there's peak times for events on the weekends, during the summertime, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, uh, basically, uh...
Yeah, yeah, please, oh, you can sit, yeah, that's live.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, basically, what we could do is Sam and maybe, uh, one of our other managers could meet with, uh, the Council.
Okay.
Look at, uh, a proposal and see how we can, uh, bring forth a plan that, uh, basically be positive, effective, and workable, uh, of all segments of city government.
So, I think what I'd like to do, Mr. President? So, Mr. President, I think what I'd like to do here tomorrow is, uh, portion, or dedicate a portion of our time tomorrow evening with BPD to talk about the special events issue. Um, Sam, if you're available tomorrow night, if you could come back and join us, and we'll have DOT there, um, for a short period of time, and, and I'll work with you offline along with the Director of DOT to set up, you know, a fifteen, twenty-minute time slot just to have you all talk about it, so we have everyone in the same room, 'cause there's, there, there seems to be too many excuses coming out of the Police Department on why we can't figure out how to do something that really isn't rocket science. Um, so, we'll, we'll go with that approach. Um, and Sam, thank you for making yourself available. Councilmember Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and thank you both for your assistance, uh, with the eviction, uh, legislation, uh, that I put forth to, uh, connect residents to resources and for what you were already doing in that, in that way. Uh, I was glad to know that that was already being done, because it's important to educate people when they're going through that sort of tumultuous type of situation on, on what's available. So thank you for just making that standard operation and working with me to make that better. Um, the only quick question I had was, and maybe this is something we can continue to dialogue about offline, but, uh, yesterday, um, an issue that I, I raised to Department of Transportation around, uh, crossing guard shortages, uh, they indicated that they have a, a lot of vacancies, um, a lot of call-outs, and what that has resulted in is, uh, schools not having coverage. Um, the way their sort of process works is around six AM is when the call-outs start coming. These principals are getting ready around seven, um, to take the kids in, and so it's not a big, not a window of time where, uh, not having someone and being able to send a teacher out there is always the easiest thing to do, and it impacts the learning environment. Is there an opportunity to potentially partner with Transportation if there's, you know, an alert that can go out, or is that something that you've done in the past to just, you know, help kids get across the street safely if we know that there's a call-out that we could say, "Hey, you know, boom, Sheriff's here" for, you know, twenty, thirty minutes at arrival or dismissal to supplement that?
That's something we can look at. Um, we're able to motivate in, in usually short-term deployments that are proactive. That seems like a more of a long-term deployment, but we, we can look at that and see maybe we can help out in that area. Uh, we just have to make sure, remember, our staffing is, is court-oriented, so, so we gotta make sure that our core constitutional duties are covered prior to deploying. One of the reasons we're able to do festivals and whatnot is 'cause usually they're occurring after court is, is over, so we can shift some resources that way, but, but we can still look into that and, and see what possibilities...
Yeah, if you could, and, and just sort of assess your capacity, I'd be happy to pull together a meeting with Transportation and their folks to, to just have the dialogue, 'cause it's come up several times in my district, and actually I had a kid get hit on Edmonton Avenue when there wasn't a, a crossing guard on duty.
Right.
Um, so, just want to make sure that, that's something that we can, you know, as they sort of navigate their own capacity issues, that there's ways that we can supplement that with yours, so let's just keep the dialogue open.
That'd be great.
Thanks a lot.
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Middleton?
Uh, just a comment, I just want to, uh, thank the Sheriff's Department for all the work that you do in protecting our citizens in the, in, at the courthouse, but more importantly, um, you know, my experience with your office with the community outreach that you do, especially in times of emergency, um, situations, you are there and just, um, your volunteerism in the community is just really important, and it shows, and some of that volunteerism has been with, um, uh, you know, a shortage of a crossing guard, and you did, uh, you, you, um, were there and operated just in short term until things were together. Um, there was, there's incidents where a neighborhood will have a, a block party and a call was made, 'cause I know you helped as much as you can with giving school supplies and setting up booths and, um, uh, working with, uh, children that are in these block parties playing, um, even if it's something simple with throwing ball, you know, a ball back and forth and just building a relationship. You have been out there within my district, and I appreciate all the work that you do, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to add to your comments before, so that we're bringing, I think, a big lens to this conversation tomorrow, um, that it's really important for us to continue to further, um, the reality that communities can police themselves, and that this isn't a, this doesn't have to be, uh, that only the Police Department or the Sheriff's Department can be running events, but that's, you're talking about like kind of having the final say on, on security and things like that, but that I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that, um, successful community events do happen with police, uh, with, with, with security, uh, arrangements that are not the first thing that comes to mind. The Fruit of Islam was recently detailed as the, uh, security plan, uh, organ, an organization hired to, to work, the Baltimore Community Mediation Center's, uh, block party at Thirty-Fourth and Greenmount, um, and, and so there are real options that are community-based that are, um, that are, that are being approved, but that I think that you're right, that this approval process and the awareness that communities can police themselves through other plans that are community-driven, um, and more relevant to specific communities are, are real and they're viable options, and so we need to be keeping that in mind and, and furthering that as an opportunity in the city. That's, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Councilman. Colleagues, we good? Sheriff Anderson, again, thank you for everything. Um, again, I want to reiterate, I appreciate you as an elected official, taking the time to come before the Council and talk about your appropriation request, and I appreciate that you have, um, taken the time to do that and demonstrate that you have respect for the process and for the City Council. Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
I'd just like to say one thing, you know, uh, I am the Sheriff, right, in Baltimore City, but behind me is a... but behind me is a workforce, a dedicated public employees. And a lot of things you see out there at these fairs, a lot of times, they volunteer their services. We don't even pay them. It's just something they like to do. And I've had folks in my office, Coach Little League Baseball, Football, there've been events, I'm not going, well, different associations would have, like these summer camps for kids, sports camps. And we would step in when they couldn't pay certain fees on the weekend. We would do it for zero cost because we felt that this was something for the community. This was something for these kids. And we just couldn't stand by and say we wasn't going to do it. And what we did was, we did it for zero cost. And a lot of my employees, when they went out there, they did it for free. They say, we don't want any overtime, Sheriff. We're going to do this one for free. And I just looked at them. I says, well, God bless all of you. So I just want to thank these public employees at the sheriff's office who's actually out there every day providing these services to the communities. And I just want to thank y'all for giving me this extra time, just to thank my employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. And Sam, I'll be in touch about tomorrow evening, and the sheriff, of course, is welcome to join us as always. We're in recess until 1:00 P.M. sharp. We'll be back to talk about workforce development.